Good evening. Before we start our meeting today, we're gonna have our prayer and closing reasons. This time I would ask Emmy Jordan if he would lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we come once again thanking you for your blessings and your goodness and your mercy that is bestowed upon us, Lord, as a nation, as a state, and as a county. We ask now, Lord, that you bless the deliberations, the discussions that will be held today by the planning board, that it will be done in a way that brings blessings to the citizens of this county. We thank you, Lord, for all that you do. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
First, I want to visit the day we'll be able to approve the minutes. Y'all raised the minutes over? If there's no changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Seven.
Do we have a second?
Seven.
We have a second. All in favor, aye? Next thing we do is approve the agenda. And before we do this, if there's no objection to the board members, Mr. Roundtree is on the bottom, and I think Mr. Roundtree, it's not gonna be a long process. I would ask that we move that, move from number six to number four. Do we get Mr. Roundtree first, so he can move on?
I'll make a motion if we make that from number six to number four.
Do we have a second? A solid favor, aye?
Mr. Chairman, on the item five of new business, that should reflect that we will go into a public hearing, and there will be two separate public hearings, one for the consideration of Sunbury Fields and one for Mr. Roundtree. So it'll be two separate public hearings.
Next thing will be administrative report, County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleased to present the administrative report for your review. You'll see the report has the development services report in it, as well as some administrative items. We're continuing to work on the CIP. It is due by December 31st, 2013, from all the departments and agencies. They have the form, and they're working on those requests. Just by way of briefing and to summarize the past actions of the CIP process, they have instructions to provide three requests and to really look at their capital needs moving forward as we start the FY '15 budget year. You'll find on the next page of the administrative report, the development services report, and then on the following page, you'll have the number of building permits issued for the month of November, total of 46 permits. And then something new that we added to the commissioners' packet, wanted to share with you some of the ordinance enforcement things that we've been doing in the county, and you can see where we are on some junk vehicle violations and some high grass violations, as well as a collapsed building that we're working to get cleaned up. So that's that long legal page document. So y'all got all that. Be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Mr. Manager, when you, in the first column, it says complaint at name and address. These look like proud individuals, but they also look like county employees that have, that are in that first column. Is that where we have taken a complaint from the county constituent, or have they wrote and seen that and noted that into the nuisance log?
Some of that has to do with the nature of anonymous complaints, and it's just entered in by the person that received it, and they become the complainant. Oftentimes, folks are hesitant to give their name, so we do get a lot of anonymous that we try to go out and check on them all. Some of them are warranted, some of them are not. So that's how staff's name ends up there.
And then the last column, where it says status and action taken, it says waiting on deputy's report. Is that a deputy of the planning department that goes out and looks at that, or are we talking about a deputy of the sheriff's department?
No, the Wheaton seat deputy goes out and looks at all these things, and he looks at whether or not there is a code violation of, say, the zoning ordinance or the tall grass ordinance. He's also looking at statutory violations, whether it be an animal control issue or some other criminal statute violation. So some of these things may have a, what I'm gonna call a nuisance, like a junk car, but oftentimes those are precursors to other things happening on the property. So it may be that the lesser offense is put on the back burner while the more substantial criminal offense is dealt with.
Are there any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next item will be consideration of zoning amendment 14-5, request by WMP Roundtree to rezone partial, 10-03, 107, A1 to RMH1. Mr. Roundtree out there?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roundtree, would you like to speak or have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from this hearing because Williams' cousin, so I'd like to be excused from it.
Good evening, board members and audience.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go into public hearing for Mr. Roundtree's application to amend the saying.
Second, all in favor?
What this is about is Roundtree Lane. Some of you are familiar with it. It is entirely mobile homes, with the exception of one small house that belongs to Todd Lewis. I have it locked back there, that my son, here in the near future, is talking about marriage, and I would like to have it rezoned, and while I did it, I just said do the whole road, for him to maybe possibly put a mobile home on to get him started in life. Basically, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments before we go out of public hearing? Have a motion for a public hearing? Second, in favor? Out of public hearing? Comments from the planning board now on Mr. Roundtree's request?
Mr. Manager, can we ask you some questions? As a draft, our acting plan directly?
Yes, sir.
What Mr. Roundtree asked, the parcel he's talking about is dead center of the area, which would be on the east side of Roundtree Lane. And like he said, every one of those parcels have a single wide or a double wide on there, with the exception of the Brick Ranch house that's on the east, on the west side of Roundtree Lane. How can we go about identifying all of the parcel numbers and unifying that zoning to what it really should be, which is what he's asking for, so we can do it all at one time instead of doing that lot and then coming back and doing, doing all the, I think it's seven or eight lots in there? So how can we go about today acquiring the proper information, I should not ask, by the GIS, acquiring the proper information to get all the lots to recommend resuming the whole area?
Mr. Brothers, it's a good recommendation that Mr. Roundtree has given you. The area is predominantly manufactured housing, and it's something that we can use our GIS system to do. Unfortunately, we don't have the GIS like we do in the other meeting space, but staff can make that analysis to find those parcel numbers, and we can certainly get that list for you. You're talking all six parcels in a line, or even further down, and getting those two parcels even further?
Where's William?
He talked about the whole right there. William?
Come back up here, William.
On his application, it says 1.6 acres.
Is that 1.6 where your son wants to put his property?
It's just, it's a lot right there, but it's nothing over. I mean, all school bosses, all school bosses. It's all school bossing, man. Your woods is kinda grown up around there.
Yeah, that belongs to William Duck.
Okay.
Or Jesse Duck, wrong. I believe that lot's his.
Would it hold you up if we held up one month to get all the parcel numbers to do it all one time? Or do you need to move today?
I don't need to move. I mean, that's why I'm in here early on.
On your dislocation, if you had it in place, like this acres?
Yes, that's what.
But did you, did you carry the same for the whole road?
Well, the 1.6 is the lot that's, see, I bought a piece of land back there some years ago, and I gave one to a gentleman and his wife for a lifetime right, live on, and they put a trailer on it. And at that time, the state was involved, and we didn't want to proceed on like we're doing now. And what should've been done then, it should've been asked for then, and it'll all be behind us.
That 1.6, I don't think it's a challenge.
Oh, no, it's not gonna hold me up. Just whatever time you need, just do it all at one time and get it over with, rather than try to get this lot and then whatever. You know what I'm saying? I'm not in that big of a hurry. I don't think he is, do you?
And Mr. Roundtree, just so we're correct, if you will, is that the one, 1.595?
Yes, I think that's right.
Right beside that one?
I believe the address is, let me count them off, I think it's 178.
You've already kind of awarded me the dad.
Yeah, oh, that's that. I mean, I fought that one two years ago and got one line, but in fact, I put it in myself for the county, gave it to the county.
Are you asking for zoning to be R1 for all of the land along this road? I believe it's Strutman land and Lewis land and some others. Are you asking for that to be rezoned also, or just the land that you did those lots?
Well, whatever, you know, the chances of Todd Lewis cutting a lot in that field is zero. You know, everything that's gonna be built is gonna be on that side if anything is ever done. And my point is, is $600, another hundred bucks is what I put in this to get it done all at once, because at some point in time, things are gonna change. People are gonna move, people are gonna die, and when the next lot, if someone has a trailer on it, let's say if a storm tears it down, they need to be protected to put it back the way it is instead of having to upgrade, because they can't afford to do it. I mean, they're all in single wides, and you know, they never gonna be able to afford to upgrade. And if they do, they would have a choice. They could build a house if they wanted to.
So you're asking for all of the land along that road to be rezoned, or just the lots that you?
I'm asking for what's in that area. Whether the road up at the front, from the Carlos Road, back, say, a mile and a half? No, just that area.
Where those lots are.
Yeah, just that one lot. I don't wanna call it a trail park, because that's not what it is, but they're the all roof front property. And that's it. There's a possibility of one more lot being created, but that probably will never happen, and that'll be part of my land also. And then, of course, at the same time, if Jesse Duck would decide to put a home back there, which most likely he won't, he'll always stay there with his dad, and that'll all be left to him anyway. Because, I mean, we were talking about extending to put the water meter back there, and at the time, all that we could get was a thousand foot, due to some criteria, if you went over that, you had to go to a different type of, you know, engineered drawing or whatever. I don't remember what it was. So we ran the thousand foot and we stopped. And of course, if he ever did want water, it's on our property, and we're not gonna deny him to, you know, cut on across ours, and we can give him that right away. All that was discussed. So we weren't worried about going any farther. And we also offered to donate, if they ever paved the road, to give enough land for a turtleneck for the EMS, for a fire truck or whatever. That was already, it's been, should be on documentation somewhere. And the state's already been, I mean, when I bought, when I bought back there, I've already signed it onto the state. That, the people that lived there, which that land originally belonged to my uncle, and it went under foreclosure, and I bought it. And the people that lived there prior wouldn't sign for the rate, which everybody has signed now over there, I think, up on the corner, which that belongs to Jeff Wiggins and family.
Who owns the hand, those lots?
Dennis Strutman and my cousin, David.
I guess Todd doesn't have any, any issues of heartburn with rezoning?
Oh, no. I mean, he's already signed off, they widened the road and everything anyway. That was already done.
Anybody else have any more questions, Mr. Roundtree? I'm gonna motion for a public hearing. Second, second. All in favor, aye? All right, we'll go back in to the session. Thank you. This time, do we have a motion to, to ask for acceptance or rejection to Mr. Roundtree's request to be rezoned from A1 to RMH1?
Everybody, please, look at the parcels first. Do we, wait, was somebody gonna pull up on the GIS? I don't have a problem with the GIs.
We can't do the GIS in here, we don't have internet access.
Give us some direction, is, I think, I'm comfortable with redoing those, every lot that we're talking about, where he's talking.
Well, not, but not the whole road.
Not the whole road.
Are we talking about six lots?
It looks like six on the map.
Right, that's what I saw.
We can analyze it. I was sitting back here, I was thinking about how the best way to go about, for y'all, because you don't wanna deny them and then come back and wanna do all of them, kind of a little bit of a quandary. But also, everyone else is receiving the benefit, he paid, is paid, so we need to think about that as well. It may be that you could do one of two things. You could approve it and recommend that a further area be studied, and have that come back. I know that's not exactly the intent. You could ask the commissioners to look at the whole thing, all at once, because you believe that it all is characteristic of one thing. So that's maybe a second option.
What would be the option, whether there's a brick house and then a lodge on H1 with those lots? How would that affect them, if we did all the other lots to their level H1?
That is a fair question, because you've got a, you've got a stick-built home.
Exactly. So how would that affect them, if they were, if we did all those lots? Because those are, if it's six, and those are two out of that six, then we could, don't have a problem doing it before, but I don't wanna hinder them.
Where is the stick-built? We would need to study it. Is the stick-built in the middle of the?
No, it's to the, it would be to the north side of the, of the very close lot that William is talking about in that area, on the opposite side of the road.
Okay, so you could just do one side of the road, just do the strip?
Right.
That'd probably be the easiest thing to do.
And then, what about the brick house?
We believe that, that's on the opposite.
We add it as a head?
We just be going inside the road. We just asking for one lot, but I guess where I'm going, where I'm following Mr. Menon Hall is that we could qualify his request today and then send it on to the commissioners that we, as a planning board, request that they look at the entirety, which is to be parcel numbers specific.
Right.
To resign the whole area inclusive of his one lot. So basically, going back to saying approve his lot today, unless the direction the board wants to go, and then send a clarification to the divisions.
Right, that is correct.
I, yeah. See if I got that right. Gonna make sure we get this right. I like making a motion that we grant Mr. William Roundtree's request to rezone that specific lot to residential level H1?
RMH1, yes, ma'am.
RMH1?
Yes, ma'am.
With the recommendation to go to Board of Commissioners to take a look at the rest of the land, the parcels? Can we review that, thank you, the county commissioners?
On the east side of the road?
The six that are in a line there. And we'll find some parcel numbers and lock down the parcel numbers for you.
Because eventually, it does have to come back to us, you know what I mean? Can they take it and go? Because if we're gonna rezone the whole area, doesn't that qualify back for an other public hearing?
It would be advisable to get the public's input and for us to go out, and first, to let these property owners know what's been discussed, on the off chance that they're not amenable, and to make sure they're amenable, put up some signs so the public can know and come back and have that discussion again. Because you're just, with y'all, because you've just heard from one of the six, you probably need to hear from five of the six, just to be on the safe side.
Do we have second?
Do we need to restate that clearance accord you might be saying and not subject to?
Do you want to add your end of the motion? I mean, I, I'm not gonna repeat all that, I'm gonna get it covered.
She can read that.
Make a motion that we approve the request from Mr. William Roundtree to rename to RMH1 and have the Board, the Board of Commissioners, to look at the other parcels of the land down that road, and then have a public hearing for the owners of the other parcels and of the land on Roundtree Lane.
Not in its entirety, ma'am.
Not in its entirety.
The six lots.
To be parcel specific.
To be parcel specific. The end lots.
Will it be enhanced or batched or?
This guy, he ain't got to, but he's supposed to. Should, he did probably. No motion, so?
We have any discussion? All in both? All in favor of granting the request? This time, we're going into consideration of amendment 14 has three requests of Sunbury Fields to rezon partial, 1003060 from R1 to RMH72. At this time, I have a motion to go into public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we're in public hearing. Sunbury Fields. Mr. Attic, do you have a?
Sure.
Sorry.
So we have a presentation for you guys, something that you might like. She's the E specialist. She's on your team. Great, thank you so much. So, good afternoon. Hello, good to see everybody, and thank you guys for coming, that's great. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to let us, to let those of our neighbors and the community who don't already know our future challenge and ambition for the Sunbury School, this is a, this is a perfect opportunity, and thank you for having us here. As many have already heard from me, I said our mission here is to return the Sunbury School to be a place of pride and an anchor to our community, and this is a daunting challenge that's gonna require everyone's help. I think it's important to let everyone know, sorry, I'm, you okay? All right. I think it's important to let everyone know, at this point, briefly, what got us here. For those of you who don't know, in 2011, Preservation North Carolina introduced my wife, Brenda, and I to the Sunbury School. Even with the terrible state of the... Even with the terrible state of disrepair from vandalism and other causes, we still saw past all this and understood the potential of this wonderful building. And by the end of 2011, we purchased the Sunbury campus from Preservation North Carolina with a ten-year plan for stabilization and rehabilitation of the buildings. The more time though we spent on campus post-purchase, the more we wanted to, if possible, was to move up the schedule. We saw, sorry, excuse me, we want to move up the schedule because sooner or later vandalism and rot from the end, the elements would make this task even more difficult in the future. So we tasked ourselves with introducing the Sunbury campus to developers, architects, preservation specialists, and regional people for feedback and proposals on how best to historically adapt the school and campus. And though we are convinced that Sunbury and Gates County is a unique location offering real rural quality lifestyle, the developers in the region, that's not quite how they've been seeing it. They noted that the distance, the extreme distance, the low population density and the current economic environment as barriers for investment. But we did receive positive feedback from the preservation community and the professionals there. And they pointed out how these classrooms adapt really well to one-bedroom apartments for seniors. This strategy has been successfully, has been successful not just in North Carolina, but nationwide. And Claudia Devini, yeah, thank you Claudia, from Preservation North Carolina is here again today and may be able to give us some input. I've included a couple of examples right here on the screen. These are two great examples. One is recently opened in Boone, North Carolina. That's the one in Boone. And this was built around the same time as the Sunbury School. And the other, you can, yeah, let's stop for a second. You can see this looks pretty similar to the Sunbury School and it's in just absolutely beautiful job they did of rehabbing and keeping its historical stature. The other one is in Massachusetts. And this is a, this is a converted school in Massachusetts and that offers these services to the residents. So this is the residents and they offer spacious apartments, wall-to-wall carpeting, an elevator, two handicap accessible apartments, refrigerator and ranges, ample closet space, community rooms and kitchenettes, onsite laundry, and very important professional onsite management. But this is going on all over the country and the state, so these are just two examples. You can find others. So as, as it turns out, our investigation into adapting the Sunbury School for seniors consided with Gates County's own effort to recognize and identify solutions to the area's shortage of quality rental stock. Especially for seniors who, as you well know, if they wish to downsize, are often forced to leave the county. And I've included some important stats from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in our own Gates County Housing Assessment published this year. And let's see if we can take a look at this really quickly. If y'all can see, I think the things that are really important to me is our population is twenty-one percent is sixty-plus. I think the thing that's very compelling for us as well is that thirty-two percent of our, the housing here for rental was built prior to nineteen-seventy, so it's very old. And I think what, again, thirty-six percent of our rental occupancy homes are mobile homes. So they're, they're old, the quality is great. And there's a growing aging senior population here. So now the Sunbury School is yet again in a position to serve the community. And by solving, what we're seeing is that demonstrated need. This is more information from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Kind of just confirming the same thing, the, the old age of the stock of the rental availability. And I think that's the key thing. And again, that, that the offer there is very small and it's density mobile homes. So here's the Sunbury School. It's, it's, it's ready to be used as a senior independent living. This, so the vision here is to proceed with an historic adaptive reuse of the Sunbury School for one-bedroom apartments for seniors fifty-five years old and plus, providing a safe, high-quality living environment for residents while acting as a catalyst to further develop the campus in a manner that's commensurate with the Sunbury community and in the best-case scenario can help to revise, or I should say reverse some of the general decline of services in the area. And I got to add here, please, if I may, that the Sunbury School's historical significance to us doesn't really, it doesn't stop at the national register. It's more important to us is that every day we feel, we see, and we meet new, new people who used to go to the school, teachers at the school. And we know that this school has super important significance to our community. And Brenda and I, we are, at this moment, we're simply the caretakers and we know this. And we're, we're proud to be those caretakers of a bit of a slice of Sunbury history here. So the request here in regards to zoning correction is RMH seventy-two is the only subcategory that functions for the intended use of the school without amending the ordinances. And for the gymnasium, we believe that C1 could function for our intended use as a center for services and activities. And of course, the big question I'm sure everybody wants to know is how many apartments for seniors are we talking about here? And the answer is there's going to be some determining factors to get to the final number. They're going to include, of course, the demand, our architectural proposals. And that's to keep in, keeping, keeping with the site's capacity, you know, how much apartments can the building, building hold? And historical adaptive reuse codes as well. Next would be construction performers. We're talking about economies of scale. Source of funds. We expect the development to be financed by a mix of state and federal tax credits such as historical tax credits as well as pre-development and construction loans. And finally, very important, property management. So managing fixed costs for a development like this as an ongoing apartments. The professional managers are very, very important and are required. So whether you have a hundred units, you have forty units, or just twenty-five units, it still requires a full-time maintenance person, a manager, and security. And any number of units under eighty by a property management company is considered very small by their standards. And this point is really important because it's the property managers that guarantee that the property is really well maintained in the future. And going back, segueing back to the gymnasium, we envision the gym to return to support, serve the current and planned community. Possible use this as a senior center or senior activity center, neighborhood activity center, commercial services such as laundry, health, and even a coffee shop, which we don't have one yet. Requesting is not just for this correction, this in closing, I'd like to say this, this request, not just for a correction to the zoning, but also to ask the community at large, that's our neighbors here, to please hug and, and be involved in this project as much as possible. This, today's meeting is another important step forward as part of our way of introducing our vision and dream for the, for the Sunbury School. And already we've gotten a lot of great support and we appreciate and thank the Gates County commissioners, Preservation North Carolina, Family Foods, our own Gates County Housing Committee, the Gates County Adult and Aging Task Force, DSS, Albemarle Commission, and our neighbors and friends, and thank you for that. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you might have. This is a really long road we have ahead of us, by the way. And the sources of funds are scarce and commodity and we're competing with big metro areas for these. So we really, we'd like to have everybody's help and input as we go forward. Thank you. If you'd like, I can sit up here and answer any questions.
Well, I was going to say, Johnny, why don't we, why don't we hold all our questions until the public has spoken? Then if we've got questions over above and from the public, then we can bring us the hash back up here. We're out of time to address all of this.
At this time, if the citizens have some concerns, some questions, we'd ask if they, when they stand up, they state their name and where they're from.
My name is Earl Roundtree, two-two-six Folly Road, Sunbury, North Carolina. Last night they had a meeting in Sunbury and some people asked if they'd come to speak. Would I speak for them? And I'm not speaking for them. They are the adjoining landowners. They're the people who live in Sunbury. I pretty much control my neighborhood because I can decide who can move in and who can't. But I did have a thing to bring up. And it's really, I hate to do it, but it's got to be done. Because I always lived by the idea that the Nazis killed seven million Jews and everybody sat around, including the Jews, and let them do it. And every now and then you have to draw a line in the sand on legal issues. And I was asked when I come in that I was going to speak on legal issues on this thing. And it's not necessarily his doing. That's not this. I spent all day yesterday, starting yesterday morning in Currituck County, coming back through Passaportank, attending the Passaportank County Commission meeting for a little while and talking to some people over there to gather an information. I thought I was right, but I wanted to make sure. The first thing that I want to say to you in the advertisement for this rezoning, in my opinion, was not proper. And I think I'm speaking for all the citizens that I know out here. They didn't even know it was going on. There was a little sign out there and one of the residents saw the sign and actually had to trespass to go get the phone number off of it. I think that's probably, the signs may be legal. I'm not arguing with the signs. What these residents noticed, and I don't mean one, Johnny, I don't mean two, I mean several. These people are A number one citizens and they're smart people. They can figure out things that I don't have to tell them. And Chuck don't have to tell them. They can figure on their own. All of the zoning information that I've seen come out of this county before gave some description, and that's the word, other than a parcel number. People saw that ad in the paper and had no idea where it was. And they didn't know it affected them until one of the citizens went over and got to the sign close enough to read the telephone number. I went to an expert in the area yesterday and I laid the ad on his desk. I said, what do you see wrong with this ad? He said, well, probably legally it will pass, but it's not the way we do it. He said it should have a description. So that's the whole point of running these ads in a newspaper. The reason the law requires you to do that is so that the people will know where they are. And these people did not know that. I didn't know that. When they did the solar farm, it's my understanding and my memory, Ray, that they put Highway one fifty-eight in there and Light Street Road. And the reason I remember that, when I saw Light Street Road, I said, Newell Light Street Road is going to have a solar farm. See, it caught my attention. If they'd have put a parcel number and nothing else, I would have had no idea what they were talking about. That's rule number one. Whether it broke the law or not. But I think as a planning board, as a county, and the citizens of this county, that I think that was a wrong thing to do and I don't think we should do that again. Next subject. My understanding, and I've talked to two of you, and my understanding and what I heard today, we want to rezone the gymnasium to C1. Now I know Joe had me, told me to shut up one time at a meeting, though we're on spot zoning. But I've stated this a great deal. And you only here know about what spot zoning is. I explained this a little bit last night. That gymnasium is just one building with a little bit of land around it. And I don't think that you're going to get a superior court judge in this state to say that if you put C1 on that and anybody challenges you in court, you don't have a chance. And I'll give you an illustration of one that I was involved in, a note out personally for the people involved in it. In Currituck County last year. One of the commissioners over there, Owen Etheridge, who's no longer a commissioner, him and his daddy owned some land on a railroad track in Shawboro. Somebody wanted to put a junkyard up. They call it a recycling center. That's the word for junkyard these days. So he, being a county commissioner, thought he could get it through, and he did. The planning board listened to it and they rejected it. They said it was spot zoning. Ben Woody, the chief man over there, the planner, and the planning board says, this is probably definitely a spot zoning. We shouldn't do it. I was at one of the commissioner meetings and the county attorney said he had great reservations about this thing. And it was like two or three acres. I can't even know. I think it was three acres. How much it was. It was A1 and they wanted to move it to something else. I don't know what you had to do to have a junkyard in Currituck County, but it was a move so they could have a junkyard. Well, the county, so the commissioners went ahead and voted to let them do it anyway. Well, immediately, a man named Ray Etheridge, who was Owen Etheridge's uncle and Owen Etheridge's aunt immediately filed suit in Superior Court saying it was spot zoning. Now we ought to be able to get some real good information on this because the judge that ruled on that was Pitt Godwin's cousin. So he could really find out this. But they said that Currituck County was wrong. It was spot zoning. So if three or four acres on a railroad could not be changed from A1 to C1, or whatever it was, then how do you think that you're going to change one gymnasium to C1 without it being spot zoned? Now Chuck, I didn't, I should have asked you this to look it up and maybe the manager may know. But how, what is that land zoned in there now? Is it all one? Well, this, how much of that area, do you got a map? Anybody got a map? I don't know how much of that is R1, being that we have mixed businesses and we got churches and businesses. I don't, if you don't have it, but it is a question. It's all of it R1 and we can change it, including the church. They get residents for hours on Sunday morning. Well, the other thing about this, and this is a statute. My understanding, I was told this, Joe. But you have to send out letters to the adjoining or adjacent, whatever word you want to use, I guess there are some of them, landowners. Now I asked some of these people, but how many got a letter? Raise your hand. Don't be bashful. How many got a letter? So see, right here, unfortunately for this gentleman, this is the law that's already been broke. This, this rezoning today cannot be done because they have not got a letter to it. I have a few other things to say, but I think that right there sums it up. In the fact that it can't be done because you hadn't got a letter, it hadn't been properly documented, and that's a statute to be done. You know, I learned something a long time ago and I believe it sincerely. That the perception of wrongdoing is worse than actually doing wrong. The perception of wrongdoing is better than doing wrong. And you know why? It's because when people have a perception that something is wrong, their imagination starts taking over. And I always like to give illustrations. And this is one maybe I ought to not give, but it's true and I think it sums it up, a perception. And how yesterday I was saved maybe from a perception, Ray. I was in Elizabeth City and I was in, part of this, what I was doing with this project. And I was in the, getting information from this lady, and I know a lot of people in Elizabeth City and county government, state government. Hadn't seen this woman in a while. Hadn't seen this woman in a long time. And after we finished our work session, I got ready to leave, and she said, "It was so nice to see you." She said, "Let me give you a big hug." Well, as an old man, that's the only thing in life we live for, is a hug from women. Well, the thing about it is, this lady had real long blond hair, and I had on this coat that I got on right now, a black coat. She hugged me real good. I enjoyed it. And when she backed away, she said, "Lord have mercy." She said, "You going to the commissioner meeting looking like that," and she started blushing off blond hair. She said, "You couldn't have gone over there like that, and those commissioners in Passaport County seen you come in with blond hairs." Perception is everything. I did absolutely nothing wrong, but I am glad that she noticed, and I say the commissioner meeting, but the whole bottom line in this closing remarks, Ray, I'm glad I got them off before I got home.
Do we have any more citizens that'd like to speak?
Yes, my name's Wade Casper, 104, Highway 32 North, Sunbury, North Carolina. I've got a few questions that maybe y'all could answer. Number one, this petition number 10-03107, no one in Sunbury has been able to get any information on that. We've been to the courthouse over here. I had a packet mailed to me about it, and I have this, of course, there's three things listed in the paper. There's only two signs in Sunbury, and this is one of them. Could y'all?
Who one you're representing, Wade? Is that 03107?
Oh, why is the sign in Sunbury?
Because each parcel's got to be properly done by, he's got one on his property too. Each property that comes up on public hearings has got to be, has got to be signed. So there's a sign in front of the school, and there's a sign on his property on Ryan Tree Land.
With the same numbers?
Well, his number is 103107. But what was, are you saying that that number was on the sign in Sunbury?
Yes, sir.
I noticed yesterday that the sign that he had didn't have the number wrong.
Wade, when you look up that number on the computer, you leave out that dash. You have to look up 10-03 instead of 10-3 to get the parcel number on the computer, so you would never be able to do it that way.
Obviously, that's out of control of the planning board. That's a director that comes from the planning director's office, and I'm sure he delegated that to somebody. Who that somebody is, I would know, and I don't think anybody on his board would know, but obviously, it looks like the signs and the, I'm sure that those labels that are put on that particular parcel are replaceable labels. And I know that, and we investigated, the label was gone, so obviously, it appears to be that whomever put up the signs probably put the signs in the wrong place. And I can't, can't validate that, but that's what it appears to be.
Well, another question, were the signs posted on the number of days required before this hearing?
How does the county manager get into that?
I have a, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have an affidavit here of where we posted the signs on 12, 10, 13. And you can, it should be in your packet about who signed for it and how many signs were posted, and whether or not we took a picture of the sign when it was put up.
Let's see here on the back of this application that was submitted, so it required for it to be posted 12 days prior to the hearing. It's just the general feeling of the people here in Sunbury that we've been getting the short end of the stick on everything that's concerned at school from since, from the time that they quit having school over there. Number one, when the property was disposed of by the county, and nobody over there knew about it. And especially, well, especially the gymnasium portion of it. But anyway, that's beside the fact at this point, but there's some questions here that I got to go along with it. Is the teachage and the other former women's club building, is it a portion of this property on this, is it included with the North Carolina Preservation, Historical Preservation Act?
It was all included when Mr. and Ms. Hatch bought it. It's my understanding that the parcels that you just named are all part of the sale between the county and Mr. and Ms. Hatch. The teachage and the other facility, the women's club, or whatever it used to be, is not part of the rezoning request that's before us today. It's only the gym and the school.
Well, but their gain, is it considered, it's not historical, coming under the Historical Preservation?
It does, but they, each parcel was parcel specific, and Renee's here, maybe she can answer that if we need her to qualify. But the gym, and the school, and the teachage, and the women's center had four separate parcel numbers. And when that, when that whole project went up for sale, it was for sale in its entirety. And they paid for it with one money, which was, correct me if I'm wrong, not to get back and rehash business, but I think they paid $50,000 or $60,000 for everything. They came before us in November to rezone specifically the school and the gym, not the teachage nor the women's center, besides Jim's Barbecue. So to answer that question, it does have historical value, even though we're not rezoning that today, at some point in time, if they want to do something different, they still got to follow the covenants that the Historical Society has given to them, which is recorded in the Registered Deeds Office of what they've got to do to protect themselves with the Preservation Society.
Well, if that be the case, they're not complying with item number 12 of the Protective Covenants for the Sunbury High School. They have been violated. Well, it states in there that there's not supposed to be any trees or anything planted between buildings or whatever. They planted a row of trees, a line of trees down between the teachage and the Sunbury school over there.
So your contention is that by planting the trees, that you see a separation of historical significance?
Well, I can't say it really bothers me. That probably, that doesn't really bother me, but the North Carolina Historical Association here has provided a covenant here of things that they're supposed to abide by, and I can see already they're not abiding by.
Well, what we don't know is, and I know in some forms of the covenant, there's some things that they do that they've got to have the permission of the president or the chief executive officer of the Preservation Society to do such things. So that lady is here, so maybe that's a question we can reserve for her at that point in
Okay, how about the septic system over there, the state of art septic system that the county had built about 12 years ago behind the school? I know the gymnasium at present time can't be used on account of not being able to use this state of art system that's back there. How about the school? Is that going to be able to operate on?
Well, the question arose in November for clarification, because there was some discrepancy in the rumor mill as to when Mr. and Ms. Hatch bought the property, whether or not the sewer system went with it. But what did not go with it is the land that, if you look at the GIS, the land on the opposite side of the dirt road that was intended for the enlargement of the spray field, which I think is five to six acres, that did not go with that. So, you know, you're bringing up a concern that I had jotted down for questions to the owners when we got all of this, as to how, what, when, and where. And if we're going to approve 72 units, we want to make sure that we can take away the affluent from it.
Well, I noticed on the application here, they've applied for, it says multiple family has, is, how many is considered a family in a one-room apartment?
I can't answer that. All I know, who we've got is RMF 72, and that's unit specific. I don't know where we would go, I don't know what the, I don't know where it would be. You know, if there's a, if there's a husband and a wife that want to retire, I would assume it could be a retired husband and wife.
You're, you're kind of overlapping with some questions that I had to do.
Well, I'll make my final statement again. And I think I represent most of the people here. It's, in our opinion, that this is not a good thing for Sunbury. If you remember correctly, we were here about 10 or 12 years ago, the same thing was on the agenda at that time. The only thing that has changed is ownership, is from the county to these people over here. And I think our position still stands, there's a lot of unanswered questions that goes with this, this thing. Say, if Mr. Hatch decided he wanted to sell his property in a couple of years, from what I read in here, the North Carolina Historical Preservation people, they're not obligated to continue their association with this project. And then if, you know, someone else comes in ownership of it, all that stuff is out the window. And then, you know, we're liable for whatever comes. And right there in Sunbury, I don't think that's what we need. I don't know if y'all, any of y'all have been on the website concerning the bed and breakfast in Sunbury. Maybe it's the wrong thing to say, but they got on there that gays and lesbians are welcome. That's not the way we roll around Sunbury. I mean, it might be in New York and Argentina, but in Sunbury, we don't roll that way. And so, that's about all I have to say.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'm sorry, pardon.
Ward Members, Mr. Chairman, Bobby Hallwell, Sunbury, 076, Highway 32 North, downtown Sunbury. 79, 79. You need my phone number? Yeah, listening to, and I knew Rand, Seaman Church, listening to him talking a while ago back, getting this kind of stuff done for this restoration, it takes a lot of money to buy it, and he mentioned using money from a loan, and he mentioned grants, and I forgot what else it was besides the grant. Federal grants?
I didn't say grants, federal tax credits and loans.
Tax credits and loans. Okay, that's involved federal money?
Their historical tax credits are federal and state.
Federal and state, okay. All right. Now, what he, what is proposed on this? If there was a guarantee saying that he's going to have a place there for 55 and older, and I definitely qualify, that's fine. But with federal, state money involved, even though he wants it to 55 and older, they're going to tell him who's going to live there. And this is, this is the type of things folks bring up, what's at Edenton with the Swain Oratorium? Check that commissioner board, see if they do it again. Go to Haskins, check, hurt for kindness, see if they do it again. They wouldn't. And what everybody's worried about there is what it's going to turn into with all ages. And you have a terrible problem of drug traffic at both of these places I just mentioned. We have enough drug traffic problems in Sunbury to start with. So that's, that's the thing that worries me. And when it turns that way, I see a hardship on schools, farmer, police work. Number one, expensive, this county has social services. Don't think that won't raise up. So I'm saying, if you want your taxes to go up, let this fly. When I came and built that house in Sunbury in 91, the taxes were $1,200. And that cost me $3,000 a year. Lord knows what it cost me in the other five years that this goes through.
Robert Parker, 510, NC 32 South, Sunbury, North Carolina. I have one question for you. Simple as this. If I have my house appraised now, I know what it's worth. After the project goes through, I have it appraised again. It's Lord. Who's going to write me a check for the difference? Simple question. I personally have also been to visit these other spots, and I can tell you, not a good idea. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and I'm going to speak a little bit to the, those gathered here this afternoon. My name's Claudia Devaney, and I'm the Director of the Northeast Regional Office of Preservation North Carolina in the Edenton, located in Edenton, just a few miles south of here. And Gates County is one of the counties that's in my region. And I'm not sure when I've spoken, I spoke here when we were trying to persuade the county commissioners, when my organization was trying to persuade the county commissioners to let us do something with the Sunbury school, which had sat there for at least 13 years with very little happening to, certainly not much happening at all to the school. The other buildings were being used, but the school, as you all know, if you live there in Sunbury, was severely damaged in 2003 by Hurricane Isabel. The file in my office was started by my predecessor, Peter Rasko. I took his job in 1998, in November of 1998. So that property had long been in our minds to try to do something about this, and what my organization does and has And what my organization does and has been doing for, the organization itself is 75 years old next year, but since the 70s, then we've been working with what we call endangered historic properties. And we've been pretty successful in what we've done. And what we've tried to do is identify properties across the state of North Carolina that are historic and that are endangered. Now, the Sunbury School property falls under a specific category we call surplus. And surplus properties are those properties that belong to counties, like, to counties and to school systems. And so, we have a special category we call surplus. And a lot of times, a county knows, they just don't know what to do with buildings that are no longer being used for what they were originally intended for. Now, we all know what that was. That was a school campus. There was the agricultural building or the women's club, that's the oldest building on that campus. The teacherage, the school, which was the second school on that site, and the gymnasium, which was the newest building on the site. They're historic and they are on the National Register. And when I made the appeal to the commissioners to let us try to market it, it was a public meeting. And, and there were things in the newspaper, and we have a website, and we, we just put those out there and tried to find a buyer. And I was thrilled when Graham and Brenda came along because the buildings themselves had gotten in a pretty deteriorated state. And the fact that they were willing to buy them, that they had a vision of what to do with, with four buildings and eight acres was, was pretty major. And what was going on at that time is we were in the middle, as you all know, all of us know, in the middle of a recession. And so, we gave them a little longer than we typically give people to rehabilitate, and that's the word, to rehabilitate historic structures because we were at the height of this recession. And those, and that property was already four parcels. And the gymnasium was thrown in right at the last, and Henry's there, I mean, for a while it was not included, but it was in the end, and so Graham and Brenda decided to take it. And what they're doing, and what, and we do have covenants, I don't know where the man is now, that was, covenants are attached to every building we ever set. And a rehabilitation agreement is signed by everybody that buys a property from us. So they've signed a rehab agreement that they're supposed to live up to, and the covenants stay with the land, or they are always with the land. So whoever it was that said that Preservation North Carolina would not be interested in what happened to this property after Graham and Brenda sell it, or the next person sells it, or the next person sells it is incorrect. The covenants run in perpetuity. And every time a property changes hands with Preservation North Carolina, we know that buyer, we speak to those people, and they know that, 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 those covenants run with the land. So that, that is not true. We would always be involved. And today, they have not put any trees in or any, any fences in that weren't there already. But our covenants were written, no?
There, there was a fence and there was trees next to the fence. The fence was already there.
Okay, they should not have put those trees there because our, our covenants did, because we were selling this as four pieces of property, we did, we added something in our agreement that we don't always add. And that was that we wanted the campus to remain, have a feel of openness, even if it was owned by different people, because of what it had been historically. It had historically been, as you all know, a campus, open to each other, all the buildings. So that's what was our intention. And, and they, and what they're proposing to do with, and all of it was zoned R1, which I thought was a little bit odd at the beginning, but I thought, well, that's not something we need to get involved with. We don't have to rezone these buildings. We don't know when we first start working with a property, we, we don't know what they're going to be used for. And in the case of the Sunbury's, I mean, if it's a house, I see you, if it's a house, then probably it's going to be a house. But if it's a mill in this economy, and because of the way the textile industry, industry has changed, it might not be a mill again. And you see that in Edenton. We have a big old cotton mill there that's not a cotton mill anymore. We have a great big old peanut mill that's not a peanut mill anymore. We have a lot of other buildings that are repurposed or adapted for new uses. And we're, we're okay with that as long as it's okay within the zoning regs. We don't get involved in that. Those are local issues that have to be resolved by the citizens within, within a community. But we're concerned about the preserving of the buildings. And so, a lot of times in preservation, people adapt buildings for new uses. And so, should I? Yes, sir.
Do you have any covenants regarding hazardous materials like asbestos, fuel, different things like that, old buildings, things in the building, ones that's deteriorating?
We don't, but, but the state of North Carolina has enough requirements about those things to take care of the buildings. We have, our requirements are pertaining, obviously, safety and health issues are not something that my organization gets involved with because that's not what we do. We do get involved with saving the windows and the doors and the trims and the outside of those buildings is supposed to look just like it does. And the insides of the buildings oftentimes do get changed, for example, like the, like the peanut mill in Edenton. I mean, it was just a great big old open area except for the post. And now it's houses, I mean, it's condos inside. So we, we were, in that particular case, more concerned with the exterior of the building. But in a building like what Graham and Brenda have bought, and like a building I'm trying to sell right now, the old county office building in Edenton, the corridors are important to my organization and also to the National Park Service, which is what, what controls the National Register. And the National Park Service has to okay anything that anybody's going to get a federal tax credit for. So the, the building will be different, but it won't be completely changed inside if it became living space.
Sure. I don't think anybody out here really has a problem with trying to preserve the look of the building and to make it look nice. I think the issue at hand, and this was something that I was going to ask, it's wonderful to have a vision. I think you presented this in November, the November meeting is when you initially came. Correct. All right, I was, I was absent from that meeting, so I've got my packet, I've read everything, and I know you want a decision, but this is, this is not a two-meeting decision, in my opinion. I mean, it's, you've put a lot of thought into what you presented. I think we, as a board, need to put a lot of thought and process and study into what decision we make that best suits the citizens of Sunbury. So, it stays through the Historical Society. They want to do it for adult living, aging, you know, senior, senior living, which I think is a wonderful idea. However, to see that idea come to fruition at the end and have it work for them is one thing. You're concerned about the building. They want to get people in the building. If they sell it, whoever buys that building is going to want to put people in that building. So it could be 10 people living in one apartment. I mean, it could be senior citizens the entire time, or you could have families with children. I mean, you can have anything come in there, and you have no control over that. You just have control over the building, making sure it stays through the Historical Society and the Preservation Society, and that it's maintained that way for structure, correct?
We, we don't, we, we only control the, the historical elements of the building.
That's fair. So you can, you can't control what happens other than that. And that's their concern.
I'm just trying to explain some things, kind of explain that this was, if, and I'm, sorry, and I'm always too long-winded, but to explain to the, to this, to this group that this was not like a secret that we were trying to sell this, this property. And, and, and I just was trying to speak to questions that were specific to PNC and tell them a little bit about how it is we, we work. And I do want to say this one last thing. This is not an unusual example of what has happened across the state to a lot of buildings that reached a point where society said they weren't useful anymore. Why society stopped saying two-story buildings for schools was not, you know, was not the thing anymore, I don't know, because to me, they're a lot more beautiful than any one-story building that was built as a school in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. But, but anyway, we just have dealt with a lot of these buildings across the state of North Carolina, and a lot of them have become, sometimes they've become senior housing, sometimes they've become market rate housing. But I think what Graham was alluding to earlier is, is that rural Gates County is not quite ready probably for market rate housing, and that's why it seems the highest and best use is for senior housing for the, the school. And I do want to say this last thing. And there's always, I was thinking that the auditorium, because there is not an auditorium, at least not anything of that size, in this county should maintain, should be maintained as, as something that the citizens of the community could enjoy, the schoolchildren in this county could enjoy. So it was our hope, we, we don't, we can't tell people exactly what to do with their buildings, but it was our hope that the school would be living space because that's the way spaces like that are usually, that's usually the, the highest and best use of a building at a certain point in time. But that, that the auditorium, because it's so big and so nice, and because there is a need, would be something that the public could enjoy here in the county. And I think that's about all I would say unless you all have questions for me. But I just wanted to explain a little bit about our involvement. And they should not have, they should not have planted any trees because that was not our intention. But I will tell you this, when we have a property that, for example, if there was a tree on that site that was larger than 12 inches in diameter, and if it, if it became diseased or something like that, we would say, okay, you can take it down, but you've got to put another tree there. And that, that's also in our covenants, if you've read those. And they're all recorded in, in your courthouse.
My question is simply, if you say elegant houses, it sounds like a good thing. What are the income restrictions? Last time, I don't want to be wrong. It's a five-year-old property, still a property. That's going to be done, screen these people, make sure we don't get something on the other wall. Thank you. Anyone else?
Quick thing, Joe, and I'm not going to tell you about no hairs on my coat no more. I would, while we got the chairman of the planning board here, the county manager, and the chairman of the commissioners, I presented to you that point about no letters and a statute. I presented to you what I felt like was wrong. And I would greatly appreciate if the county attorney would take a look at spot zoning and not sending out these letters that was supposed to, and send me a official letter on this within 10 days. And of course, I don't have any money between now and January, but in January, I can take out some more retirement money and might be able to pay a lawyer if I have to. But I would like to see, I didn't make that clear, I want that addressed, because if that's not addressed, my whole day has been ruined here.
Questions from the planning board, does anybody have any questions?
One, one question we had was a gentleman, and I believe the answer was before, is the number of units, even though it's R72, it's clear that they're planning on somewhere between 35, 45, if I remember correctly, or less. Right. I think that was pretty close. 35, 45?
Yeah, that, that's, but again, we have, we need to, simply right now, we simply need the flexibility because there's, like I mentioned those things, there's demand, there's economies of scale, there's also, the key thing is the property management. I think that's really important, that we get a quality property management company and that handles all of this. So right now, we're talking, and finally, the, the building itself, its capacity. So the numbers we're looking at right now, but, but we do need the flexibility. That's.
John, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my question is, I know that when somebody comes to us for a subdivision, that we have certain criteria that have to be met and established before we can even vote or make a recommendation. And what about in this situation here? Is there any certain kind of criteria that has to be met before anything can be voted on?
So far as a site plan and detailed kind of evaluation of souls and all that, no, ma'am. With the, resuming, there are no such stipulations as that.
I got a question on Mr. Ranker's, the issue about levels of the center. Can we, should we vote on it by then, not have been notified by the level?
You'll notice in your packet, your agenda packet, that it's not called a public hearing. We've had some internal analysis and looked at it, and it's been brought to our attention that the planning board does not conduct public hearings, the Board of County Commissioners do. So the notice that was given, was given as a courtesy notice to the public, that the required legal notice that's required by statute will only be given for the actual public hearing that the Board of County Commissioners need.
So how can we go into a public hearing without notifying the public that this will be a public hearing?
I have similar concerns, Mr. Ranker. I have since been directed to closely look at the statute, and that is what the statute guides us to do.
Well, traditionally, since I've been on the board, Joe, I think we feel the same way, when we've had the public to come, it was always notified as a public hearing.
I understand.
And I think something of this nature that's going to impact Sunbury specifically and the eastern region of Gates County, specifically Highway 32 Cor, the public needs to know.
I understand.
Are we still in public hearing?
We never came out.
Mr. Catherine?
Yes, concerning that issue there, the public being notified, I have only talked to two people in Sunbury. That sign was erected last Tuesday, a week from, ago today. And I've talked, every one of these people that I have talked to and called about this, I don't guess anyone here would have known, would have known about it had I not called them. It's right in front of my driveway, but it's so close to the road and it's turned facing the road that no one, anyone passing by could see, I mean, know what it is. I've talked to two people that actually saw it, neither one of them are here today, but neither, none of them knew what the number was, what the petition number was, which the petition number on it is wrong. So it concerns Mr. Ranker's property, from what I understand. And also, the way it was put in the newspaper, listed in there, like Earl. It was done, there's no doubt, I mean, I think that's a general feeling of everyone here, it was done so that be no one here to protest against it. And we feel strongly that way. And just like you said, all the other properties around it are listed to tell you something about them or where it is. You look at that art, the way it's listed in that paper, there's nothing. It might be able to have it footed in one of the bridges somewhere.
I can. Have a motion, Joe, ask if there's one more. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak before we go into public hearing?
I would like to respond to some of the comments I made. I mean, I've taken notes on everything, so if somebody has some specific things, I'm totally available to, you can talk to me today, you can talk to me tomorrow as well, not a problem. I think some key things I wanted to talk about here- I think some key things I wanted to talk about here is some stuff I do know. The public, the federal housing laws, the only discrimination we're talking about that he's allowed is, is age-specific. You can make apartments for seniors, the law allows that, and that is our plan. I think it's really, we need to step back a little bit. I can't, I can't answer any of the questions regarding the way that the, the county proposed the, the sign, others can do that. But we have been around, talking to everybody we can. If you saw that list in our presentation of all the folks that we, we thank, it's because we've been talking to them and talking to them, and we've been going to the churches and talking to them, and we're always around, we're neighbors, we're here, we're available to talk to. And the key here, really, let's get down to the basics, and that is, this building, we came here to try and move forward with this because, and then you can see, more rot, more vandalism, and the buildings can go down that much further. We love this, we are so proud of what we, we purchased, we're so happy to be a part of this. And we are going to use all the energy and all of our ambition and our money to try and turn this, this school right now, which unfortunately, I'm going to use the word blight, into a positive for the community. Somebody was mentioning their, their appraisal of value of their house. Right now, I imagine the value of your house when you're sitting next door to a, a building with those boards on the windows, that's not great for your property value. What's great for your property value is a redone, if I showed you that one, if you remember, in Boone, it's just beautiful. It looks like it was redone yesterday. And the interiors, on the slides there was the interiors, the place looks great. And so you're going to have a, a neighbor now, which is going to hopefully add value. And again, we're talking about seniors here. Our community needs this. We are an aging population here. Seniors, you know, it's part of life. They downsize, they lose, they lose someone, or they're too old to take care of their big houses, they need a place to go. Now they're going to Virginia, or someplace else. And I think they should stay in the county, I think you all agree with me on that. And we are the owners of this property, and, and we have a vision for it, for making it good for us. We are your neighbors, we can live right next door. We're not talking about, somebody mentioned crime and such things. Part of this whole financing project, you have to have good-looking properties, well-managed properties. You have, you have rules that say, this is the folks who can stay in the apartment and who are not allowed to live there because they don't make the age requirement, for example. So we're talking about a well-maintained, it has to be, the financing for something like this, there's a lot of communities who want this, they really want it. And they're going to, they're going to compete with us to make it happen for them. So we got to want it too. We got to want to say, okay, it's time to take care of our seniors in the area, it's time to take care of the Sunbury School, and this is our best, best opportunity. I've done a lot of homework trying to figure out what we can, again, adapt to reuse this, to have a new life for the school. And this is our really best shot, folks, and it's a wonderful shot. I mean, if you go to some of these apartments where you see the folks living in there, they're healthy, they're clean, the apartments are great, the people are proud of where they live. I mean, there's some of these discussions here about, I mean, it sounds like some like 1970s Johnson administration, public housing. No, this is, this is quality living for our seniors in our county. I think that's the key to this whole question, does Gates County want to have, to want and use the school, to take, to come back and be, something to be proud of? You know, otherwise waiting for a new opportunity. I've heard a lot of people saying, they should have done that, they should have done that. Well, they didn't, and we're here and we want to, we want to do something, we want to make it happen, and, and we'd be proud to have your support. Yeah?
The income requirements, that could be 50%, maybe?
That's, that's too early to say what the income requirements, I'm not, frankly, I'm not too worried about that because rental in, rental in Gates County, market rate, or whatever, it's, it's going to be low. We're talking about maybe five, $600, can't charge much more than that. So that's...
Based on income, is it?
Based on your...
Based on your income?
Am I, no.
Based on your income?
No, exactly. Again, I'm saying the rental rates, the rental rates are going to be, I'm saying if they were open today, we're talking about five, $600. Simply, that's the market, can't afford more. Simple as that.
That's because of the controlling.
No, because, I mean, again, we're too far from Suffolk and all those kinds of things. No, the government doesn't control that.
If you qualify for a subsidy, $600 becomes $180, and the federal government pays up the rest, is that not correct?
Not in this case, no, again, yeah, I know, I'm not aware of that. You could, you could say, hey, you know where to find me?
Where?
Come by, bye, and, and we can, we can go this together.
So you're going to rent instead of sell?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to rent, there'll be rental apartments, exactly. Okay? There's probably some things I'm missing, but...
I'll, I'll...
Okay, now, do you have a question or?
I've, I've got one question before we go out of public hearing. The question came up, and I think it's a very valid question. These are one big room apartments.
Right.
What is the limitation of occupants per apartment?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, again, property management, I've been kind of repeating that, repeating that, they'll have rules, regulations, and the rules, one, let's say one bedroom apartment, we're talking about two folks, two folks. We're not talking about multifamily, like lots of folks, we're talking about retired folks, place for them to live. Simple as that. Let's, don't, there's no other vision, there's no, there's no agenda, and for sure, with us, there's no agenda. Our agenda, we're, we love Sunbury School, we love the building, we love the campus, we want to see it to become something viable again. And this is something that we think is a, a great thing to be our next or neighbor to. So we, we're going to be neighbors of this, of this project as well.
I would have been here down the road, you all have a cell building, it goes to historical preservation society, and you set it up for senior living. So with the new owners, will management come in and change that?
Okay, then the financing that we're looking at, this, this money's super competitive. And they have a lot of, the financing that we're looking at, super competitive. There's a lot of folks who, who want to try to send, get the same financing, they have a lot of rules and regulations, and it's about, about a 30-year contract that we will be having senior apartments in this school.
For 10 years?
Yeah, so if we sell tomorrow, whoever would be the new owner, they still have this contract, it's 30 years.
Yeah, but at the end of 30 years, we're not...
At the end of 30 years, it's time to actually, at 30 years, you're probably going to want to do is refinance and, and get it...
I mean, would it still be senior living if somebody bought it out after 30 years?
The agreement is for 30 years, and after 30 years, you're going to probably want to refinance it to get it to look good again, you know what I'm saying? So the...
But it could be for seniors or other apartments?
After 30 years, the agreement's over, yeah. Any other questions, is there any?
I have one.
Yeah?
Would this be subsidized, mint, or would it be paid, paid your own?
Thank you, yeah. Again, there's housing vouchers in, that people discuss, and people are, people are trying to say, is this low-income housing? And the housing vouchers, people can go anywhere with, there, there's a limited amount of them, of course, but the folks who have these housing choice vouchers, they can go anywhere with them, that they can, to rent a apartment. Right now, their opportunity is to rent a trailer, and we're, and that's that, we can't say, you can't stay here because you have a housing voucher. This is not low-income housing, this is senior housing. That's the key to this. If you, if you have a housing choice voucher, that, that's what you're calling subsidized. These people have the, the right to choose where they can use their voucher. And, and we're not, right now, their choice right now, they don't have much of a choice. They have to go to trailer parks or other, other means. We're going to be able to provide something that's quality, that's, that you want to live in, that's healthy, that's safe, that's secure, that the, the walls are good, and the place is clean. So, so seniors are, you know, they're maybe the most vulnerable when it comes to income too. So again, this is not subsidized low-income housing per se, this is senior living, and a lot of seniors maybe have a housing voucher. I hope they, if they, they need help, they're getting assistance. Does that answer your question?
I'm not familiar with a housing voucher.
That's what you, okay, that's how it works these days, that folks have assistance through housing vouchers, they get subsidized from, with a voucher, they can go and pay their rent with. That's how it works.
So they're subsidized houses?
Again, no, the folks have the freedom to go to rent an apartment anywhere in the county that there's apartments available. So we can't really control that, that's my point. We can't control who, who has a voucher, who's not, who's paying with vouchers, who's not paying with vouchers. We have a price.
You're looking at two different types of volunteers. With the housing voucher versus the paid voucher, you're two different types of volunteers.
Okay.
But they all actually seem to be...
They have to be seniors, and I think, again, I mean, I wish all the seniors were, were well-off and doing great, and were living on more than just a social security. But I'm sure there's going to be folks out there who are very great people, who can be great neighbors, who just happen to not have as much money as some of us, or not as fortunate, and they are in their gray days. And if they have a housing voucher, well, thank God somebody's helping them. But this is not changing the, the look of the building or the feeling of the, of the environment that we're going to create. We're going to create a really clean, safe, healthy environment for, for all the residents there, whether they have a, a good income, or a low income, or, or whatever. It's going to be one quality place for people to live. I hope that helps.
Have you done this project before?
Uh, no, and we have no, for that reason, we have a great professional team of guys who have done this before, who understand all the, the architecture work, all the paperwork, and we have a great team that we've, we've gotten involved in this. But, but sorry to interrupt you, we also have a, we do have rehabilitation experience, my wife and I, we, we have a hotel. So we've, we've done the, the hard lifting, making it old, beautiful, filling new and beautiful again.
Your tenant is a local or is it...?
It's North Carolina, yeah, yeah, exactly. But these are, these are, these are preservation experts, and these are architects and, and historical consultants, and these people specifically work with these kind of adaptive careers as well.
My name's Jerry Moore. How many jobs does this home create?
That's a great question. I'm hoping that we're going to be a catalyst. I mean, first, the, the, the school itself has apartments, it needs a manager, it needs maintenance, it needs security, it needs cleaning, so there's some jobs right there. And also, we're talking about the gymnasium, the gymnasium should be able to service the future tenants and, and the neighborhood, you can have laundry, there's no laundry anywhere. The, the tenants are going to need laundry, maybe a coffee shop, maybe we can, we can make community services. So they're talking about three or four jobs minimum in the, in the gymnasium as well. So we're talking eight, at, at the limit, at the minimum, eight jobs, minimum.
Well, if you're only charging $600 a month for those people, how are you going to pay all these people? Why are you giving the money?
No, again, not automatically, it does work, we have, it, it does finance itself. We're talking about, the gymnasium will be C1, so we're talking about commercial use. People would pay to do their laundry, people would pay to have their coffee, you know? But the budget that we're working on for the, for the school, the manager, the security and maintenance, the rent will pay for that. And that answer, of course, you'd have 40 people paying $500, they'll pay, they'll pay for it. And what we need to do is have not that much debt when we build this. The more debt you create building it, the more expensive it, it's sustainability for the future. Sustainability is, is always more guaranteed when you're, when you have less debt. So if we, if we can use these competitive tax credits and historical tax credits, we're going to be okay. We'll be able to finance this thing and not have so much debt. If I go tomorrow and we ask for, to just borrow all the money for this, it would be difficult. But that's why I was saying that the money is out there, are competitive.
How many square feet is in that school?
Schools? 26,000 square feet.
How many?
26,000.
That includes the halls and that's the, that's just the school, that includes the auditorium?
The square footage of the, of the hall thing, exactly, exactly.
Well, I need to know, what you should know, if you're going to put apartments in there, you should know the number of square feet that you're going to put apartments in. And that way, we'd be real simple to, to figure out if, how big your apartments are going to be, and take a calculator and invite that into total number, and you should be able to give us a direct answer as to how big, how many apartments we're going to have. It's real simple.
No, it's, it's not as simple as I, which it was.
It's simple to me, because I understand...
Right, no, but it's, yeah, financing, so then, if you build too many apartments and no, and it's too many, you're just having excess cost. You build too little, and you're having these smaller, there's few apartments paying for a big project. You know, the, rehabilitating old buildings is way more expensive than building from scratch. It's much more expensive.
And the square feet per apartment are you talking about?
About 660 square feet per apartment. Again, the platform sizes are the...
600 square feet?
Uh-huh.
You call that an apartment? I call that a room.
It's a one-bedroom apartment, 660 is a one-bedroom apartment.
Mr. Hatch, if, if we could get you to, to stop there, we need to get out of public hearing so we can go to charge for the task and see if it will help you or not, or hurt you today.
Thank you.
For the record, and the reason I want to do this, I want this on the record because you know how court cases and all are, and lawyers. Now I want to get this straight because I'm confused. Chuck wants to go out of public hearing, and you made a motion to go in public hearing, and it was second and proved, right? Now what part of Mr. Minn Hall did I understand about this wasn't a public hearing? Can anybody verify that to me for the record? Are we in a public hearing? How can, if we're in a public hearing, you don't have to go out of a public hearing unless you're in a public hearing. And you are in a public hearing, according to that. I just wanted to make it straight for the record and hope these records don't disappear. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that, with that being said, I make a motion that we go out of public hearing so we can discuss these concerns and come up with a viable decision today. So I make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Do we have a second, sir? All in favor? We are out of the public hearing, and now back to regular session. Comments from the planning board?
John?
Yes, sir.
In light of some of the things that have been said and everything, I'm like, I was calling the state, but maybe there were mistakes or some old sites or something. If we could post the zone, find the correct parcel number, and maybe send letters out to people of Sunbury, I don't want the people of Sunbury to feel like they're not treated in any way. And I know what the Hatchers are doing, I believe wholeheartedly, it's a good thing for the old school, but we want the support of Sunbury community out at the same time. And that's just, just the way I feel about it.
As many of the members know, they received a email the other day from Mr. Minn Hall that said something to the effect of pursuant to, to a member's request, and that request was mine, which was what we do not have in our planning abilities and our zoning ordinance, which is the ability to attach conditions. We have no conditional use permit, and we have no conditional zoning. There was a link to a University of North Carolina government blog where David Owens commented on when rezoning conditions are done right. And then there was also another one that I found last night, it said a conditional what, clarifying some confusing zoning terminology. And the one that gave three, three levels, conditional use permit, conditional use district, and conditional zoning, of which we have none of the three. And listening to what people have come up to me with, irregardless of the signage, the signage is the signage. The notifications, whether they were done in a, in a window... The notifications, whether they were done in a window that looked like they were, in a short order, they were done according to what I guess the letter of the law permitted. Obviously, in my eyes, it does look like that it was stretching the envelope a little bit to notify the county or the people in the region, especially when we find out today that we have in a public hearing that the law says that we don't have to have. Sir, saying all that to say this, those issues beyond itself, the underlying issue I got and the underlying issue I heard today, and the underlying issue that I heard from many people, is the what-if factor. What if we rezone Sunbury School to RMF 72? We've already heard from the lady with the Preservation Society that they have absolutely no jurisdiction whatsoever of the laws of this federal, state, and county ordinance, and it says so in their covenant. So they have no jurisdiction over this. So I think I heard from Mr. and Miss Hatch today that they're only... When they bought the property in December 11, they want a 10-year plan, okay, of which you've got eight years left. And I guess that clock is ticking with the Preservation Society as well, okay? I guess the question that I've got in my mind, what if Mr. and Miss Hatch throw their hands up with it that they've exhausted every means they can to come up with every ounce of money? And I'm not saying this to be demeaning, but I think it's going to take more than $50,000 to fix that building.
Or...
I've got a feeling that it's going to take three to five million to fix it, okay? I can show you in Suffolk now, and I always reference Suffolk. The city of Suffolk wouldn't spend $1.4 million to renovate Robertson Elementary School, but they took that money and consolidated it and sent it to Southwestern and consolidated Robertson and Southwestern into a new school that's going on 58. But they wouldn't spend $1.4 million on a school, but they're spending $3 million in it to make a rec center that the community didn't know and didn't want. So I guess what I'm saying is, the city of Suffolk with a $600 million budget, Gates County with a $10 million budget, and we have exhausted our means of being able to hold on and procure that facility when we've lost our rights of ownership. The only thing we've got the ability to do is what's in this book for zoning and subdivision? Oh, we agreed on that, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Sir, and saying all of that to say this, and not being able to put a condition on it to protect the integrity of Sunbury and to protect the integrity of the eastern part of the county, not to affect what the what-if is, you know, my contention is, I think we're setting Sunbury up for a potential of like you saw on the cartoon of the coyote and the road run. I think the coyote is sitting on the acne bomb, that's getting ready to tick, a steady ticking. And what I'm saying that to say, and everything, is that what they intend today, if they don't get all of this stuff to fall in place, we are left with a facility that's zoned, RMF 72, and that man sitting over there could come over there and bite from Mr. and Miss Hatch and go in the direction that we're hearing from these people that they don't want, because we don't have a condition in our zone. Now, we're the dual... We've got a dual sword, edge sword. We've been fighting Sunbury School since 1998 of what to do with it. When the county had the opportunity to do something with it, what did they do? They did nothing. Now we've sold it, and now Mr. Hatch, who has a plan, has got to jump through the hoops of the county, of which I see issues with of where we can go. So we... I mean, I don't know what to do. I don't know what's right, and I don't know what's wrong. Somebody's would come out of this deal upset. There's no doubt in my mind. Personally, I see as much issue with the gymnasium in C1 as I do with the school in RMF 72, simply because we cannot attach a condition to it that limits the activities of that, that takes some of the permitted uses away from the zoning ordinance. Am I correct in that statement, Mr. Mayor? So the only way that I see for Chuck going forward today to help these people is we've got to do a text amendment to where we can have a conditional zoning with this facility. I think the slide showed a few while ago that at sunset of 12:30, is it January? Or December that your tax credit's got to be filed?
14:31.
When is your tax credit's got to be filed?
No, no, no.
Was it January? Okay.
January, January.
Okay. I, you know, I guess what I'm asking for is direction from the county manager as to what we can do to all make this applicable, or do we, as a board, back away and put it on the lap of the commissioners? I guess that's where I'm at at that. End of speech.
We're not here to talk about downtown.
We can ask.
But we need to ask and then...
Really?
That's all we're talking about.
Ask this question. What they're talking about dealing with the gym, is that not permitted under the RMF? There are other things permitted under the RMF other than this multi-family house, multifamily house.
The school was one direction, the gym was another, because they wanted to have certain things in a gym that created service orientation. So the residential multifamily 72 is not applicable to what they're intending with the gym. See, and that brings up the spark zone thing.
Well, I... Because I know like convenience stores and so forth are permitted within that use, and there are some special mission things that are permitted within that use. So I was just wondering if they're not applying on the same zoning versus the C1.
There are a lot of them that you can have under there, even this is a garden.
You can do your fire department and so forth, what's permitted under that use. So it could be that the gym could go under that use as well as, you know, versus that would be a C1.
Of course, that move starts too, and that is because it's R1, and that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to have an opportunity to address you and the citizens of the county. Thank you all for being here. And I apologize, and I'm kind of saddened to see that it's turned to this. But when I got elected, one of the things was put on our plate was, do something with that Sunbury School. And we've done something to the best that we can do. We've tried to do what we can do to make it a positive. I applaud Claudia for the work that she's done to help us out. But the thing I want to point out to you all today is that, per the procedures, your obligation as planning board is to provide a recommendation to the commissioners. A public hearing was not to be a part of it. You're not... If you look at your zoning ordinance, you look at your general statutes, you're not required to have a public hearing. You're required to provide a recommendation to the board commissioner. So in that light, I think it's appropriate that you all do what the ordinance and the general statutes call for. That is, to give the commissioners a recommendation. The commissioners will have a public hearing, which is required by law. We're going to have to spend unnecessary tax dollar monies to have another public hearing. And I voted to the attention of the county manager, we're spending two monies. And so your task today is to give us the recommendation, not to approve whatever you do. It does not approve nor reject it. If you give it to us, we'll make a decision. You're here, we've heard the concerns. We've got to make a decision. We want the best for the county. We want the best for our citizens in Sunbury. I live in Sunbury. But we've got to move forward. That's what your task was. If you look at section 1405, you're tasked to provide a recommendation. You do not do an approval, but a recommendation to the commission board. And we would ask that you would please do that so that we can move forward. Thank you.
At this time, I want to ask, I want to have a recommendation to approve or disapprove the request of Mr. Hatch, who has RMF 1, I mean, R1 RMF.
Based on the uncertainty of what the possibility could be there, like the historical Preservation Society, but based on the uncertainty of the housing, I'm going to deny recommendation at this time.
Do we have a motion to second that?
I see. We have a recommendation, of course, and we have a question. We've worked on what has been offered, that what Preservation Board Carolina calls, also with citizens involved, to us, their concerns, and they have their concerns that they answer us about Preservation Board Carolina as well as our own people.
Your recommendations, Senator? Okay, before we do that... Did she make a motion? She made a motion, but had not the second.
She made a motion to resume?
No. My motion right now is not to resume. I have to make a decision now to not resume.
We have a motion that's been made to reject it. We do not have a second, so it dropped. Motion has a lack of, a doubt, a lack of problem. At this time, I will ask if there's another motion to approve.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to approve. I think our answer is to give a motion to the board, and our answer is to give it to the Preservation Board Carolina to our citizens, that their concerns or support and...
Because we have a second, the motion to approve. I'll say it. We have a second. All we've done is that we have any more questions? A motion from the board.
No, you're wrong. A motion against... What was your motion against?
This is approved, basically. The resigns affect...
As we hear this today, I see friends, I see neighbors from Sunbury, and I didn't hear anybody say they wanted to move on. Now, if we heard it before, I would have voted yes, move on, but I didn't know the citizens, my neighbors, my friends, and my family out there objected to it. I had no... I just didn't know. I thought this was a great idea. I know Claudia, I've heard her speak a time or two, and I love history, and I thought that you all were behind it. I had no idea.
Just like Mr. Jordan said, we only avoid recommendation, whether we recommend it goes through or rejects it. They have the final say so on it. So at this time, I will ask everybody in favor of approving the motion to raise their hand. All against, we both have hands. Four. Okay. It's four to three against the motion.
Clarify... This should have been done, clarify which parcel you're talking about now.
This is the Sunbury School. We haven't got into the gymnasium yet.
I want to make that clear, precise.
When we started, I read the...
Go ahead.
So at this point, we're going to do this again with the gymnasium, which will be parcel number 1-03061, and they're requesting that this be changed from R1 to C1. This is the gymnasium. And I guess we didn't get up to a hearing yet. Do we have a public hearing? Comments? I think they all rolled into one, okay? I'll call for a vote. Vote on the motion to change from R1 to C1. This is the auditorium.
Gym.
The gym, I'm sorry. It's a good job. They all want to C1, which will be commercial.
Before we do that, I've got a question for John.
Okay.
John, on the gym, they want to rezone that to commercial. If someone resigned to commercial, could they vote in honestly and amend it and go light commercial?
It could, yes, sir. Mr. Askew would require a text amendment to create a light commercial-type district. Currently, we only have one commercial district, and that's C1.
Right. Okay. I was just thinking, so they're zoning light commercial. They could use, you know, what they needed, zone light commercial, but then it wouldn't open the door, you know, if anything else may have damaged it.
Yes, sir.
That's just... That's what I was thinking on that.
Any more comments? We have a motion to approve from R1 to C1, on the gym.
Can I say something again? Mike Renee said the RMF encompasses a lot of special permissions and a lot of things. If it were in RMF 72 or whatever, I mean, that encompasses a lot. If you open it up to commercial, it's a lot of permission given for a lot of things.
Well, I think this is why Mr. Askew has mentioned the fact that light commercial would limit it to certain things where we couldn't get into a major opening up for all.
Can we vote on light commercial? We can't vote on light commercial today. We have to get to C1.
We have to vote on this on the paper today. Mr. Chairman? We have to vote for or against.
Mr. Chairman, a question that came up from Ms. McGinnis, who talked about convenience food store, that is permitted in a RMF, but it's by special use, it's got to be a fourth adjustment, and...
But it still could be permitted.
It could be permitted.
Versus a C1.
But, you know, the only things that are permitted, it doesn't have to go through certain things, permitted use for RMF is veterinary pet grooming and kennels, electric gas or sanitary services, electrical substations, telephone subscriber line carry, whatever that means, convenient fruit and vegetable stands are permitted, bed and breakfast den is permitted, golf courses are permitted, park and recreation areas are permitted. And then everything that kind of gets into what, I think Mr. and Miss Hatch, you know, you're talking about dwelling unit contained within another principal use, that is not permitted. But if you put a gym as a C1, it's permitted. So you could physically, by the code of the zoning ordinance, have dwellings with inside of the gym if you send it to C1. That's the problem. That's the problem. We have no ability to attach any conditions that will not, that will take these permitted uses out of the equation. That's the problem. And I think anybody in this room can appreciate that.
Well, not so much of that property in front of the gym. A lot of that property belongs to the church. That's where it's complicated part of the district.
I can agree with you. We need to call for a vote.
Call for a vote, either for or against.
For or against the resigning from R one to C one? Do I have a motion either way?
I'll call, I'll move that we vote against.
Second motion. Just a second. All in favor of a motion to oppose this resigning, raise your hand. Okay? All for it. I will say this, Mr. Askew, that we are only, like Mr. Jordan says, we only advisory, um, this will go to the board of commissioners, and they have the final say so. Say.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Since we didn't vote to pass that at C one, can we recommend that the board commissioner look at the chance and help C one?
That's a whole other text amendment.
I know, it's a text amendment, but that was first of all, they've done very good.
Real doubt is, and also putting a conditional zoning, which, I mean, it's a lot of things. I mean, I would hate to be Mr. Hatch in this position, because I was having money spent on a building, that's having all these suits to jump through, that should have been knowing. Why, and of course, that place was zoned R one, when zoning come in, it's beyond it. And now we're faced with another dilemma. Here's a man that's got, and his wife has got money tied up. Well, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be discussed, but, you know, I don't know.
Shut down now will need to be shut down.
Right. You know, Commissioner Jordan, when we had our November meeting, it was a timeline for Mr. and Ms. Hatch to get their stuff in order for their tax credit, whatever you were doing with application. And the meeting for y'all is on, was that, was this thing gonna come up at your first or your second meeting in Jan, in January?
Our next meeting is, uh, January eighth at ten o'clock.
And, uh. So that's when this will come up probably?
That's when this will come up, when you'll address it. Um, you know, there again, not taking anything away from the planning board, because, you know, we do consider what the planning board brings to us, and, but you've given us the recommendations, and we take it from there. I mean, you're not, uh, you're not approving it, you're not rejecting it, because you don't have that, that's not within your purview. Uh, so, we'll take a look at it on January eighth, um, and give all considerations, and ask the citizens of Sunbury, you know, talk to your commissioner. I'm just one commissioner. And we've got five, um, and we're all gonna look at it. We know where we've been, we know what we've dealt with, and, uh, we just want the best for stuff. We want the best for Gates County, we want the best for Sunbury. It's not a, it's not a personal issue, but we just want the best. And I think we've tried to do that, and we haven't done it the hardest way. But I know that the way that school has been for the last ten years is not the way we want it. And since the Hatchets have been here, uh, there's been some improvements. I'm one of the commissioners that this summer, last summer, when the grass is growing up and whatever, I made a phone call. I said, I don't want my Sunbury looking like that. I want Sunbury to look great. And, uh, and I've been one of the flooders, let's check this place going, so. I'm just one, I'm the chairman of the board, but I still have one vote. Uh, I think we need to figure it out. If we don't do it, what are we gonna do? I mean, yeah, we were just gonna make a decision. That's what, that's what I was waiting to do, and that's what we have to do. So, we'll take it from there, give it to us, and that's what we'll, we'll deal with.
I have a question for you. Um, you think you, y'all made the best decision, um, do you think it was the right decision, um, to give the gymnasium to these people above the consideration of the people of Sunbury when we came before you, before it was disposed of, when we find out all that was done under the table? You know, there's nobody, nobody knew that the gymnasium was, uh, to be disposed of until that was almost done. But we came to you as board of commissioners before that took place, and, uh, I was just wondering if y'all still think it's the right decision?
Well, um, I think it was the best decision we could make at that time, but I don't recall, and I'm not saying it wrong, I don't recall it coming before the board, uh, after we had made a decision to do it. I mean, it may have, I, I don't recall that it did, but.
We have, the whole wooden club was here, came before, and the board of commissioners, they had it in here.
Well, I do remember them coming, but I don't know the timeline, whether or not it was, it was before the sale. One of the reasons we threw in the gym was because, uh, the Hatchets were, they were to the point where they weren't quite sure, I believe, uh, Claudia can verify that, is that, uh, you know, they were negotiating. It was a negotiating tool. And so, we decided to let that go with itself. But anyway, we want to do the best for everybody, and I think all of you can appreciate the fact that we've got to make a decision one way or the other. And since we've got to make a decision, we want to make the best decision, but whatever decision we make, we want to make sure that it doesn't cause us to be in a worse situation than we are or have been in the past. And how we get there, we've got to come down to January eighth, and I think we can get there. I think, you know, I, I've lived here, I was born in here, you know, all my life, except times I've gone away, that the school would work. And, uh, and so I know we, I know what we can do in Gates County. We can make it work somehow, we need to do that. We've got your recommendation, and we'll take it from there.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing I want to say to you right there today. Before when the Hatchets came in and Claudia came and spoke to us and worked together, we gave them a vote of confidence, all of us, still isn't here, but, um, we had, again, we had no idea that you objected to it, so we did give them a vote of confidence. And today, I voted against it because I hear your voice, but I, I didn't know that before. And I, I really think they are moving forward and trying to do the best by county. I wish we had special conditions we could put on us.
Yeah, folks, I'm just gonna have to repeat myself a thing. Uh, we have a, a school here that has been running down and down, and it was available, as Claudia slightly said, it was available on the website for any of y'all to purchase. And it took us coming from very far away that we did, and we said, we're gonna take, uh, we're gonna take the risk on this because we just think it's terrific. We think it's wonderful. We do love Sunbury, and we've enjoyed enormously being here. So we want the best for this, and we want the best for the school, and this is really our great opportunity. I'm sorry if you don't see that now, but I really do need you all to see it with me, because if this is gonna happen, we're gonna move forward with y'all. It really needs to help. So if you have any questions, please, don't hesitate to come by, give me a call, talk to me, we'll work this out. But, uh, money doesn't grow on trees, nobody wants, uh, nobody's like giving us anything. We all know that. We have to work for it, we have to earn it, and that's what we're trying to do. We're working really hard, but we're gonna need your help. So, um, please, if you have any questions, if you have any doubts, we're very available today, and you can say. That's, do you have anything to add, Renee?
No, they talk about the tree. Sorry about the trees. The trees were taken thanks to a couple of neighbors that decided to help us with a pickup truck to take those trees out of the foundation of the school and the gym, because it was, the roots were destroying the foundations. And I thought, because I'm a pro, echo, whatever, that I could save those trees, and I replanted in a place where there was already a division between the two lots. I didn't know that was going to be an issue. I knew it was not the right time to plant them, and they are all dead now. That has to do, because I'm not a countryside person, and I don't know when to plant it. So, they, they're all dead, and that is not an issue for us. I'm sorry if I tried to save those, it, it was an intention actually, there's a lot of people that park there because they commute to work in Norfolk, and I saw maybe a good shallow of a tree would be nice for them too, but it's my mistake, and I'm sorry.
All right, and one last thing, Gates County, these are my nails, they are completely dirty, because we've been trying to flood up the leak in the auditorium. And it's, wood's rotting, and it's leaking, and it's gonna get worse, and we are trying to stabilize it. We're using a lot of our own effort, and this is the kind of people we're talking about. We're, we're sitting there with our own hands, trying to make this school ready to be developed into something great with our own hands. That's what we're about. And again, uh, this is not some kind of, uh, we're trying to go underneath anybody at all. Folks, I've talked to a lot of people in the churches, all the neighbors, uh, I've talked to people, and I've always been around to talk more about it. I love talking about this project. It's a really exciting project, so please come to me and talk to me, and, uh, and I'm sure we can work this out.
At this time, my last motion of the government. Motion to adjourn. We thank you all for coming out.